On February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd also like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Manchester, the home land of the making, and that we are all true people. Next, I'll ask for, well, first, I'm going to let you know we have regrets from Council of Fitzpatrick tonight. And we have Council Valen, Deputy Mayor Valentino and Council Oberhoffer on Zoom and the rest of us are in the, in the room. Uh, number three, approval of the agenda. Anthony?
Uh, there's a request from the administration to remove item six point four. We're still awaiting clarification of some councils' questions from the last committee of the whole. We'll bring it back to the agenda once we have council's answers.
Thank you. So can I have an approval of the agenda as amended? Council MacIver, Council Coburn, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, uh, any comments or feedback?
I'd like to comment on the, uh, bylaw, if we, the mayor would be involved, but if she stayed in the room.
Uh, down at seven point one, I have been removing myself whenever it comes up, sir.
Okay, so should you not remove yourself before I speak on it?
Heard it.
Should you not remove yourself before I speak on it then?
This all, I still have a public hearing.
That's coming tonight?
No, not tonight. It'll be per the planning act, so it'll be in March. So I'll have a first reading tonight and then there'll be a public hearing.
I'll bite my tongue, Joel.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any further comments? Need feedback? Any comments or feedback? And Lindsay, thank you. We will move on. Adoption of minutes five point one is the regular council meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolution two zero two-three zero one eight moved by uh, Council Chang, second by Council MacIver. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Uh, Council Chang, any comments?
Nothing further.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie. Five point two is adoption of minutes for committee of the whole February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Resolution two zero two-three zero one nine, moved by Council Chang, second by Council MacIver. It resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on February, February, on Monday, February twenty-sixth, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Do that again. Monday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, he adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Council Chang?
Nothing further.
Other councillors' comments? Call for the question. All those in favor? You know, with the resolutions, six point one is a resolution to write off the amounts owing from Princeton Towers receivership.
Buy that service to the public. So this would then allow them to continue to operate in our facility, providing free internet to the public for five more years.
Thank you. Council Cobra, any comments? As a mover?
Uh with sign in this letter, we give off base down there. We check all systems.
Yeah, so Shaw would be in charge of updating all their own infrastructure over those five years, doing security updates, whatever changes they want to make.
Any other comments? Uh Deputy Mayor Valentin.
Thank you, Mayor Smoke. I'm just looking for clarification under the current situation. Is it to be April first? Twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-eight? On the memo? And um I was similar to Council Coburn's questions that were answered, so no cost to the city. And they do all the upgrades, then I'm fine with supporting it. Thanks.
It should be the last line, April first? Two thousand twenty twenty-three to March very first April, March very first two thousand twenty-eight. Are you not right?
The resolution is correct, the memo had it incorrected. But the resolution states are correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Same then, call for the question, all those in favor? Council Runmer, as you took the chair last time, would you come and take that as I?
This is the first reading of bylaw twenty thirty-two, twenty? Twenty-three. Being by law, the city of Thompson can amend the zone by law urban hold. That would be a result that by law in twenty thirty-two to twenty? Twenty-three. Being by law, the city of Thompson to amend the city of Thompson's only by law. Eighteen ninety-one dash twenty twelve. As amended. To make changes to the urban hold zone. Be introduced and read. A first timer. Administration.
We need to go run a second there.
Oh, remember was uh Brian Lumber and the second or was? For Cobra. Sorry. Yeah.
So uh back in last August, council approved a study on parcel land within the city. Uh this with conditions. To make an amendment to our current zoning by law to add boarding and lodging as a conditional use. Under the urban hold zone. This is that next phase. So again, this is the first reading of that uh of this zoning by law amendment. So changes would be to add a use class definition of boarding and lodging to our zoning by law. And amended permitted conditional uses in the urban hold zone. To add boarding and lodging as a conditional use. There is a public hearing. If it received pass first reading tonight, the public hearing date has been set for March third. And public notice will be given uh on that date once first reading is passed. The. District planning, Brett Mack, if you knew all this. And again, has no uh no concerns uh with with this um uh application. Uh Council Oberhoffer, I believe you had a question last time regarding how much property uh this would would cover, whatever the whole zone covers. So I did a quick look at our map today. Uh the entire uh city of Thompson is about nineteen square kilometers. And our urban hold zone right now represents about six. So you're looking at about a third of the the current. So like the area of that six is predominantly all north of the bridge. Where um it will be changed. Once the large lots come through in the one area as well as the uh. The Seacoast subdivision is also known as urban vault, so that could change over. To other. Zones in the coming. Period time.
Thank you. Uh I guess I shouldn't move the talking first, I'm the chair. Uh for the also Deputy Mayor Valentin.
Uh thank you, Council Runmark. So I'm gonna be supporting the first reading of this so that we can get it to the table. For second and third for discussion, and so then we can move forward with the public hearing. Just for clarification to Director Sopronics. This would also be the change for the large lots. Is that what you said? North of the Burtwood River? I just didn't hear the part of that.
The. I know what Council around here, sorry Deputy Mayor Valentin, I'll have to check the map. I looked at today still has that zone as urban hole. Uh it probably shouldn't change the large lot.
Those have been reasoned by the previous council, I believe. So one area has been zoned by recreation, I believe the other two years zone. That was large lot.
Yeah, so that was. So that area will actually get smaller.
Okay, if I can just continue, Council Runmark, because I hadn't heard him earlier. So I think it's important that. Um council understand that this is just a zoning bylaw amendment for. All applications. For under our um. Our bylaws, so. I don't think that it's necessary that it's related to the one project. This is gonna make an amendment to our entire, our zoning bylaw that way. I just wanna also draw attention to council and to. Uh maybe the new counselors that. In November of twenty twenty, the province put into uh planning zone, planning act review. Um which stemmed the bill thirty-seven, which has taken the control out of local municipalities. To do any kind of um planning act decisions. So if for whatever reason. Um if this didn't move forward, or if after the third reading it didn't pass. Now there's an ability for any applicant to. Appeal to the municipal board and they will make decisions. It's something that has taken the control out of. Local elected officials, which is really, really discouraging. And you may be seeing in the news that there's a lot of appeals in process and they're just bypassing city councils now going directly to the municipal board. So as this stands now, I'm definitely supporting this to make a change in the zoning bylaw based on the recommendations. And um that the uh Brett Mack has been involved and says it's fine to move forward, so I will be supporting moving forward and the public hearing comments. And the second and third reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Also, Oberhoffer.
Thank you, Council Runmark. Sorry, I have a cold, so you might not be able to hear me. I'll try to talk loud. Um. So sorry, I know Lyle, you spoke to it a little bit, but um my questions are to administration again. Um so I just wanna understand, make sure I understand. I just had a little bit of trouble hearing you when you were speaking. Um so I have two questions for administration. The first one being. Does this impact any of the plans for that development north of the river for those large lots? Um in any way, um would it change what's going, what the plans are for out there? And then my second question is if administration has any concerns about. Future implications in our other urban hold zones. I know we're saying most of it is north of the river, but is there any concern about? Like, to me, this, I. I I am supportive, supportive, um similar to uh Deputy uh Valentino and moving this forward so that it can. Um go to a public hearing. But I am just, I guess, I just wanna understand what the future implications could be. To me, it doesn't seem like it would be a bad thing for this to be able to happen in urban hold zones. In any area, people wanted to apply to uh to uh, I know we're not speaking specifically to um the. Uh application for uh the specific urban hold zone that brought this forward, but um. Just speaking to that in general, I don't really see a concern with that, but I'm just interested in what administration's position is on if. There were to be more developments of that type, I guess, in urban hold zones. Thank you.
Yeah, with uh council, with respect to your first question, no, it does not impact those developments north of the river, because those areas have already been pre-zoned. For their own uses. But uh those ones are already protected. Um in terms of the second question, I would go to the director. The director has any concerns? Or if the province has brought forward any concerns?
Yeah, there there have been no concerns identified by the province, by the district planner. And I I'm following him. I I can't see any uh implications with with this change.
Thank you. Yes, thanks.
Uh I don't know which one he was first, uh Council Cobra.
Thank you. Actually, mayor. Last time. Maybe. I asked. Was during agreement. Ready sort, brand product wise. On that piece of property. For storage. Or party. I didn't get an answer. And second. I I'd like to really know. Why that area was done for. Urban. Holding. Right, all of the. Original. Interest. For letter, that they would be. Irving or winning.
So I've been repeating kind of what the deputy mayor said, that this is a request for the entire zone, it's not a specific piece of property. It was right with the request on what the urban hold is. Urban hold is how you designate all land that is not sold for any other use. So it's land that's within the boundary. It's not having any other designation, so it's just called urban hole because we're an urban municipality and it's being held. So it usually has the most generic. Or. But it only has a few things that you're allowed to do on it. Um but it's pretty open. And then normally what happens is uses are defined by the council and you would zone it either residential, commercial, industrial.
Thank you. Still no master's or plan. Was there? Any bylaw change? Or any agreement? Or it was grandfathered in? That this area? Was allowed for storage.
I think right now the question has to be, is any of you do with this for the ball, very.
Well, this is the question. Right?
Yeah, so that's.
You wanna move it, I do too, but. When, when am I gonna get my question answered?
The question has to go with the resolution, so the question you're asking doesn't pertain to what the request is. The request here is to change the entire urban hold zone. Which I believe we said was seven or six acres.
If we're going to change it here now, then we should change it. To storage too. If that's the way it is. Because. I don't know. You know, you you want me to change it to this, but this kind of business is going on there without any agreement or anything, any knowledge of this. Right? Nobody knows if that.
No, so sorry, counsel, that that's not the process. This is a request. Any member of the public can make a request under the planning act for specific change. That's their specific request. This isn't a city request. So because that request is made, you're required under the planning act to consider exactly what's being requested. So the administration doesn't go in and change someone's request. They say this is what I'm requesting.
I'm not asking the change. I'm just asking to see the document or the the agreements or whatever. That is. Uh that allows this work to this stuff to go on there, then I can make up my mind if I can allow this stuff to go on there. You know, if something's going on there, I don't know if it is agreement or not, but now you want me to change it. To to something new. Right? And I don't know, is this a pro uh a present? But you know, I got no problem with it, but why? Are things, businesses going on there with no agreement with the city? How come you didn't come before the city to change the uh? The bylaw by when the, when the. Uh but the story starts. Why wasn't this process brought up then?
Question right now is.
I know what the question is right now. I've been booting back for five, four meetings now, I think, with this question. And I still don't have that. Oh, move it into the next section. Move it ahead to the next section. Uh we gotta pass this one now. Right? I know what this, but.
So this council, this has only been to one meeting in committee, the whole. It is now here for first reading at this meeting. Any other meetings were on a separate topic under the planning act.
But was. Wasn't that made up here? Wasn't that made of God when he wanted to do it, the guy that, or some? Wasn't that amazing?
Each one of these must follow the process like that in the planning act. Well, the planning act hearings that you've heard previously under the last council had to do with the subdivision. That's a different process under the planning act.
No.
It is absolutely a different.
When, when, no matter what happens with this ruling tonight, or if we continue with this.
When the next meeting comes up.
Will I give my answers? I'm, I got no problem passing on this, but if there was no the agreement. That allow stories to go on there. Why is there agreement gotta come down? And what's the process in here?
We're saying there are you.
You won't get your answers? Because this is a urban hole for any.
I won't give me a.
Your trusty specific.
The city got no power over that property. Alright, so why is it brought to us? Because automatically, we say no, but I'm not gonna say no, but I'm gonna pass it on to the next section. Next thing, but uh uh if we say no, our hands are tied. They go directly to the government. Correct? And we, and we denied this process versus got a chance to appeal to the government. So this is why we doing this?
Yeah, so that would be a question to the government, so the province would have to be asked that. The province made changes in the last two years to the planning act. Because of complaints that they've received from developers in southern Manitoba. Those changes have changed the entire process of the planning act that allow any developer now who's not happy with the council decision to go straight to the municipal board. That's outside of our hands regardless. We are still required regardless to go through the steps of the planning act with the public notices, the multiple readings. So we are still and council still obligated under the planning act to follow these processes. So that is a lobby effort that uh AMM has taken on. Um it hasn't been quite successful in getting where some members of AMM want to be, but regardless, we we have to follow what planning acts says.
One more quick, no. One more.
Go to council two, two time first.
What I'd like to know is.
Council Cobra, ask for two times. Thank you. I I like to understand. This motion tonight, one that had include the words. Of boarding and lodging. So. In boarding and lodging, that mean is a business, right? Correct? So do the city benefit? From getting the accommodation tax?
There would either be a change to an accommodation tax, depending on how it's defined, or there would be a change to the assessment. So if there is a change on a property, on a use or new buildings, assessments branch would come in and assess the change in volume for both the property and the activity. And then the change would happen to the taxes to that process. Unless the uh director, unless you have another.
Uh and this property is is not on the jurisdiction of CD like water utility or sewage, whatever.
That's correct. All the properties that are north of the bridge are not currently part of the utility because they cannot be accessed, they cannot access the water of the sewer. So they're just completely separate from the utility, but they would fall under assessment for taxation.
Thank you. Chase, there any other?
Thank you, Chair. I think I can answer a couple of questions. I also have a question as well. If you go to the zoning bylaw page fifty-seven, you can see the picture of what is permitted, what is condition used. So what Council Coburn asking is not under this page, so there must be of some sort of agreement we are before, even though. There should be stated in there the under the condition use of having the storage or residential. So go back to the question that I'm asking, I wanna ask is about this uh. Is boarding and uh. Lodging uh amendment. To the condition use. So I think some, so the only thing I have a question is, so all the urban reserve will be allowed to have this type of uh. Facility from after the investment is approved. So. That means anybody who owned that property on this kind of a zoning, they're allowed to build cabin. Or any rental, uh whatever the uh. Uh breakfast, break and breakfast, cabin rental or vacation rental. To become a business. Am I right around the decision?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, because it is going to be as a conditional use. For property or hazard property in the urban hold zone. And wishes to do one of these things that you just said, they still, you have to come to council. And and seek conditional use approval. For that use.
Are you sure about that? Because once you put in the zoning by law, condition use, permitted condition use, which is boarding and 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 lodging. There means anybody who who owned the urban hole were allowed to do that. That's the impact, right?
That though, that's the second part of the amendment is we're adding it as a conditional use.
Yeah, I get that.
Into that. So they still have to apply for conditional use application, and it still has to come and get approved by you.
Sorry, then what what will be the process then? Because the condition use is already in the zoning by law for urban hole, they're allowed to have lodging. So a newcomer, do they need to apply the condition use again?
So I can clarify, so in any zone in a zoning by law, there's two use classes that are allowed. So there's one that's called permitted use. That means if you're in that zone, you don't have to ask anyone's permission. You can just automatically do it. Your property, you're allowed to do anything that says permitted, then no one can say anything to you. If it's conditional, you still have to do the extra step of asking council's permission each time. So what they're saying here is we'll make a change or the proposed change that is coming on alone is that this will be added as a conditional use. That means every person who owns urban hold property will then still have to make a second step. And request council. So council could pass this through three meetings, approve it, and then a landlord can come and say, I wanna do this. You can still say no. It's up to your, each council to decide each piece of property what they wanna do. So that's a second step, opens it as a possibility, but it still requires another step. And that step is the conditional use approval step is outlined in the planning act. So we'd have to go back to the planning app and go through a whole nother other process.
So if you recall, sorry to interrupt, that was the second condition. So when the subdivision went through, there were two conditions. One is that the urban hole have to be updated to add boarding and lodging. And then the second is that the property owner with subdivision comes forward and asks for a conditional use for that new two acre lot.
Can I just continue uh? So from what I listened to you guys explain, so that means condition use is go by individual application then?
That's correct. Under the planning act then, if it's a conditional use, in any zone, that has to come before council for that conditional use.
So let me go a bit further like my question. So let's say my 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 area, which is the heavy. If a a heavy industrial. So at one time, someone. Applied for the uh the towing and storage facility, and they got approved by condition use. So. So now, let's say if anybody go there to apply to to have the business, do this, still need to apply again.
Each individual will have to do their own conditional use application. So it's a conditional use through the whole zone. Where your businesses are. But every single property owner who comes there and wants to do that use, that's a conditional use, has to see council's permission each time. Now, the only time someone would be able to do that is if they were already doing it before this bylaw came into effect in twenty twelve, which is called a pre-existing non-conforming. So someone new can't do it. But someone who is already doing it before the bylaw was changed is allowed to. Why? Because that preserves a landowner's rights that they had before a council comes and changes it the. A way of doing things. So say I own a car dealership in your area before twenty twelve. Council changed the bylaw, says you can't sell cars in there anymore. You're still allowed to continue to sell cars because you're already grandfathered. Now, if you sell it to someone else and they start to try to sell cars and do other things, they would have to come and get permission.
So final question, let's say to this resolution amendment approved, so. Do we update the fifty page, uh page fifty-seven? So now the principal use, would it be adding the line for whatever the accessory use? Or principal use a lot, another line to say lodging and 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 and. And the boarding. Under C, which is condition use, will it be added to the page?
That I don't have the zoning by law in front of me, but typically, I'm not sure if this is going primary or accessory. I'm assuming it's a primary use as a conditional. So it'll be in the table. It'll say this definition. It would say that it's then on the conditional use side. And then the definition itself gets moved into the back of the zone. Under the definitions which are alphabetical.
So that mean will be update the page fifty-seven for one more line to say allow lodging. And boarding.
That would.
Under C, but not P.
It would be C, which means condition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that. I I just don't have it in front of you.
Anyway, I'm gonna ask for it. Thank you.
Uh. So everybody, uh anybody that hasn't asked a question. Uh, do you have any questions? Oh, okay. One of the second question was, uh, Council Cobra. Your first one.
Okay, I can even have two.
Uh, Senator or Council Oberhoffer.
Thank you, Council Runmark. Um, yeah, so just, um, I guess a few things that come to mind, uh, sort of hearing some of the conversation around the room. Um, you know, we talk about not just as a council when a city, but like as a community, um, you know, supporting economic development opportunities. And supporting tourism initiatives and things like that. And. You know, to me, adding boarding and lodging, the definition that's attached to that, the urban hold zone. Allows for future expansion on that in our community. And I don't see why we wouldn't be in support if administration has no concerns about how it's going to impact any future planning that we have going on right now. Um, then I'm definitely in support. Um, I think we're forgetting that we're not talking about um at this time, a specific property that's owned by a specific individual. Um, and it seems to kind of becoming a little bit personal, and I think we have to take it back and remember that we're talking about future planning for our city and our community. And this supports both economic development and tourism, so I'm definitely in support of it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm with Council Cobra.
I don't do any of your personal. Nothing done here personally. It's all done by the law. I gotta ask a question. And if I don't get an answer, well then. What am I supposed to do? Go for it. Or the answer. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna mention that it's where. Um, I'm in agreement with this. And it's where we. Understanding it now, make that. Let's see, but it's where, like the zoning and that is where uh. Nor is disrespect to you, the council over, but it's it's um it's where we're at. This big point right now, but then at the year already over here with the little. Points of what we're gonna put into the big. Areas and that, you know? But it's where we have to understand this part first and agree with this before we go to the smaller. Things that we put in to the big part, you know what I mean? So it's just that like with that, it's. I'm in agreement with it because it's um like it's future. Um for the city of Thompson, the. Go to growth of Thompson. And it could be for um. The tourism and all that. Instead of being the over the. Uh town. But they consider that the zoning is where. I use the big things person instead of the ingrained. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'll uh. Somebody else has questions? I'll say the same, I guess, this is Council Oberhoffer. I'm looking at this as an urban hold zones where. In the future, people will develop for uh. Lots. So we're in some lodging, uh we almost have an issue with that. Uh our hotels are. Quite full all the time. This is just another opportunity for business. Uh the the diversify our funding. And there'll be taxes involved and maybe also uh. Hotel revenue, right? Or lodging revenue. And your uh call for the question. All those in favor in the recorded vote? I got Council Valentino, Council Oberhoffer, Council Runmark, or sorry, you definitely know Valentino. And Council McCarry. All those both. Council Long, Council uh. Over, Council Chong.
Over, Council Chong. Chair, please the second. Thank you. All right. All for German. Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Valentino, a second or. Also, whoever, always there. Um.